Mr. Chairman, we're ready.
All right. I've got to let everyone get settled.
I understand.
Good afternoon. I would like to call the meeting to order. I'd like to welcome everyone to the August 10th meeting. It's not August 10th, it's September 12th, the 12th meeting of the City County Planning Board. That's how long this meeting is going to take tonight. It's going to take a while. Would you please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Today's meeting is being broadcast live on TV 13 and will be rebroadcast at 10:00 AM Friday morning and again at 4:00 PM Sunday afternoon. Our first order of business today will be the consent agenda. These are items for which the petitioner is requesting withdrawal or continuance, or items for which staff has recommended approval and no one has signed up to speak in opposition. For public hearings today, each side will have a total of 12 minutes. There will be no rebuttal period. Once the public hearing is closed and the board goes into work session, no one is permitted to speak unless a planning board member asks them a question. For general use district zoning request, the planning board must consider the full range of uses allowed in the zoning district being requested. The petitioner may not refer to a specific use for the property. For special use district zoning request, however, the petitioner must identify the intended use or uses of the site and give specific details on how the site will be developed. Items under Section B of the agenda will require final action by the appropriate elected body, either the city council or county commissioners. As such, votes taken today by the planning board concerning these items are recommendations that will be considered by the elected bodies during their review of the requests. Before addressing the planning board, we will need your name, address, and zip code for the record. Our first item of business is the approval of the minutes of the August 8th and August 22nd meetings. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Motion by Mr. Lamb.
Second.
Second by Ms. Smith. Any discussion? All those in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign. That is unanimous. Thank you. I'm now going to call on Mr. Brian Wilson to review the consent agenda for us.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Thanks for joining us on the September 12th meeting. I'll go ahead and get started. Our first item is B6. That's case W3633. The petitioner has withdrawn that request and did so prior eight days to the meeting, meeting all the requirements. Next item is B11. That's case F1648. They have requested an automatic continuance to your October 10th, 2024 meeting. And now back to the top of the agenda. The next item is B1. That's case W3628. Petitioner is the city of Winston-Salem, requesting a zoning conversion. It's from county MUS to city MUS for a 19.77 acre site located at the terminus of Scarlet Tannager Drive. It's along the south side of Brookberry Farm Circle. This is Brookberry Farm Phase 11. You can see the property highlighted in yellow. It's entirely internal to the Brookberry development and completely surrounded by MUS zoning. And here is the aerial of the site. You can see they're already grading in all of the street infrastructure for this. And the West Suburban Area Plan does recommend single-family land uses. Again, this is a conversion, so they're not requesting any new uses. It's just a conversion from one zoning jurisdiction to another. Staff does recommend approval for this request, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for staff? Thank you. No one has signed up. Is anyone here opposed to this recommendation? Seeing no one, I declare a public hearing close. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move the planning board find that the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Motion by Mr. Lamb. Second by Mr. Stillman. Any discussion? All those in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I further move the planning board recommend approval of W3628.
Motion by Mr. Lamb. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Stillman. Any discussion? All those in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Oppose it. Same sign. That is also unanimous.
All right, Mr. Chairman, our next item is B2. That's case W3629. Petitioner is Richard Dillard, requesting to rezone an RS9 zone property. It's a portion of the entire tract to highway business, limited use. It's a 2.7 acre tract. It's on the south side of South Main Street, just southwest of the South Main Street interchange with Highway 285 right here. You can see the surrounding zoning is predominantly highway business on the south side of South Main Street and along portion of the north side. It also contains some LI, GB, and LIL, so quite a mixture of high-intensity commercial and industrial land uses. The property further south of the stream is zoned RS9. This is the aerial. The property is largely undeveloped. I believe there is one unoccupied single-family structure on the site today. And you can see the mixture of industrial and commercial land uses surrounding the property along the corridor. This is the South Suburban Area Plan land use recommendation map. It does recommend commercial uses to the north of the stream, which is exactly where the boundary of the proposed rezoning is. The request is, does fit within the land use recommendation for the area plan and does meet the recommendations of Legacy 2030. Staff recommends approval of this request. I'd be more than happy to ask, to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for staff? All right, no one has signed up. Is anyone here opposed to this recommendation? Seeing no one, I declare the public hearing close. What is the motion of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move the planning board find that the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Motion by Mr. Lamb.
Second.
Second by Ms. Smith. Any discussion? All those in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I further move the planning board recommend approval of W3629.
Motion by Mr. Lamb.
Second.
Second by Ms. Smith. Any discussion? All those in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposes. That is also unanimous.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, moving right along. The next item is B3. That's case W3630. Petitioner is Green Thumbs LLC, requesting to rezone an RM18 zone property to PBL. It's a 1.14 acre site located at the southwest intersection of North Chestnut Street and East 14th Street. You can see the property highlighted in yellow here on the location map. It's bounded by a diverse array of different zoning districts. We have the LI zoning to the north. That's the USPS postal facility there. We have some RM18 zone apartments just to the east. GBS zoning to the south. Right now, I believe that's manufacturing A, and even a neighborhood serving business there. That's a salon there. Property is bounded on the western side by the railroad corridor and then further to the west by North Trade Street. And this is the location, or excuse me, the aerial. It's a, it's an already constructed site. There are six single-family homes bordering East 14th Street on the northern part of the site. And then that's a 12-unit apartment building on the southern side there. You can see the existing commercial building there, the apartments, and then that's the postal facility there. And the area plan recognizes the existing land use, so it splits its recommendation between the single-family on the north side and high-density multifamily residential on the southern portion of the site. And the request, in staff's opinion, does meet the recommendations of the area plan that allow for either the rehabilitation of existing structures or the redevelopment of new residential units. While it is PB zoning, they have limited the requested uses to only the residential land uses. Therefore, staff, the request does meet the recommendations of the comprehensive plan, and staff does recommend approval of this request.
Are there any questions for staff? All right, no one has signed up. Is anyone here opposed to this recommendation? Seeing no one, I declare the public hearing close. What is the motion of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move the planning board find that the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Motion by Mr. Lamb.
Second.
Second by Ms. Smith. Any discussion? All those in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I further move the planning board recommend approval of W3630.
Motion by Mr. Lamb.
Second.
Second by Ms. Smith. Any discussion? All those in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign. That is also unanimous.
Okay, and now we'll move to item B4. That's case W3631. Petitioner is Pop Down Center Incorporated. The site plan was known as Bobo's Deli. This is, petitioner is requesting to rezone from LB to GBS. It's a portion of the entire shopping center. It's a 0.85 acre tract located on the east side of Transy Road between Mickel Road and Yakoville Road. You can see the existing shopping center here. A portion of it is zoned LB. That's on the western side. And then there's some HBS zoning further to the east. On the southern side, that's LBS. And then you have the single-family neighborhoods further to the west and to the north. The site is located in Growth Management Area 3. And this is the aerial. You can see the existing single-family home on the site, and then the rest of it is just remainder greenfield from when the shopping center was originally constructed. There are some other commercial buildings, there's a post office, and I believe a veterinary clinic at the corner and further along on Yakoville Road there. This is the area plan, West Suburban Area Plan land use recommendation. You can see this is part of the Yakoville Road, Transy Road Activity Center, and it does recommend commercial land uses on this site. And this is a blow-up of the proposed site plan. It's proposing 3,000 square foot restaurant with drive-through and then all the parking. This request is going to be internally accessed through the existing access drive on Transy Road with two access points. They are showing all the required street yards internal to the site, so they took that street yard right up next to the parking, and then they've volunteered to extend the sidewalk all the way further into the shopping center to add some needed pedestrian connectivity. The site plan does meet all UDO requirements, and the request is consistent with the recommendations of both the area plan and the comprehensive plan. Therefore, staff recommends approval of this request. Be more than happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for staff? No one has signed up. Is anyone here opposed to this recommendation? Seeing no one, I declare the public hearing close. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move the planning board find that the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Motion by Mr. Lamb. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Smith. Any discussion? All those in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Oppose it. Same. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I further move the planning board recommend approval of W3631.
Motion by Mr. Lamb. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Smith. Any discussion? All those in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign. That is also unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, our next item is B5. That's case W3632. Petitioner is K&amp;V LLC. The site plan was the Cherry Street self-storage site plan shown in your agenda packet, requesting to rezone a split-zone HB and RS9 parcel to GBS. So you can see the zoning line there. The northern part is currently zoned HB already, and the southern portion is still RS9. It's located at the southeast intersection of North Cherry Street and Polo Road. You can see, again, that has a fair number of other zoning jurisdictions along the corridor. You have the NCDIT Division 9 Field Operations Site to the north. That's the LIS zoned area. The HB zoned area contains a gas station. You have a commercial building across the street there. And then RM12S, that was rezoned a couple years ago to, for some apartments and townhomes. Then again, further to the south is a single-family neighborhoods. And here is the aerial. You can show they're actually actively working on the RM12S zoned site now. There's the field operations site I mentioned before and the gas station. And the single-family neighborhoods to the south. And this is the North Suburban Area Plan update adopted in 2014. It does recommend commercial land uses for this site, including the area that they're leaving out of this request, which is, contains a single-family home. The petitioner has worked with staff to limit the commercial land uses to primarily neighborhood-serving purposes, given its location at a prime corner location. And this is the proposed site plan. It's showing one 30,500 square foot retail storage building, and it has the access drive and required parking. They're showing all required landscaping and buffer yards with a new stormwater containment pond, and then additional tree safe area in the back to use the existing tree area to buffer against McCamilla Street and the existing single-family home. The site plan does comply with all UDO requirements. And these are the proposed elevations. Staff worked with the petitioner to make sure, ensure they meet all of the U specific requirements, including building articulation, fenestration, and so the site plan, the elevations, excuse me, do meet all of those requirements as well. The requested district and uses meet the recommendations of both the area plan and the comprehensive plan to locate appropriate neighborhood-serving uses along corridors, and staff recommends approval of this request. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Are there any questions for staff? And no one has signed up in opposition. Is anyone here opposed to this recommendation? Seeing no one, I declare the public hearing close. What is the motion of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move the planning board find that the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
A motion by Mr. Lamb.
Second.
Second by Ms. Smith. Any discussion? All those in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous. Opposes? None?
Mr. Chairman, I further move the planning board recommend approval of W3632.
Motion by Mr. Lamb.
Second.
Second by Ms. Smith. Any discussion? All those in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous as well.
Okay, next item. We'll move on to some of the county zoning petitions. This is item B7, case F1644. The petitioner is Peters Creek Partners LLC, requesting to rezone a portion of a GBS-owned site to RS9. It's a 2.51 acre site located along the eastern side of Peters Creek Parkway, across with his, from its intersection with Haber Sham Drive. That's right there. You can see that there is commercial zoning further to south and Oliver's Crossing Activity Center. You've got RM8S and RS9 here to the west across. This is undeveloped RS9 to the east, and then part of the plain residential development to the north is RM8S as well. And here is the aerial. The property is largely undeveloped. It borders directly next to where the access point is for the off-site transmission tower, so that has to do with why that curve is showing up. That's the required, UDO requirement drop zone for, for that transmission tower there off-site. And then the property again is undeveloped. And then you can see Oliver's Crossing down here and the Bojangles official roads off-site to the south. You can barely see it right there. And this is the South Suburban Area Plan land use recommendation map. It does recognize the existing zoning and recommends commercial land uses. However, when staff analyze this request, given the narrow dimensions of the property and where it is located, it makes it less suitable for future commercial development. Given the existing zoning to the east, it does seem appropriate that this be rezoned so it could potentially be assembled and developed comprehensively. Therefore, it does meet the general recommendations of the area plan for citing single-family residential development in appropriate locations, and it does meet the recommendations of Legacy 2030 in that it supports infill development that's compatible with its surroundings. Therefore, staff does recommend approval of this request, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff? All right, no one has signed up. Is anyone here opposed to this recommendation? Seeing no one, I declare the public hearing close. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move the planning board find that the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
A motion by Mr. Lamb.
Second.
Second by Ms. Smith. Any discussion? All those in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposes? That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I further move the planning board recommend approval of F1644.
A motion by Mr. Lamb. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Smith. Any questions? All those in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposes? That is unanimous.
Okay, the next item, that's B8. That will move to a public hearing item, so we'll move forward. Now we'll proceed on to item B10. That's F1647. The petitioner is Front Street Walburg LLC. This is the Walburg Road industrial site. Requesting to rezone a split-zone AG and GIS zoned property to LIS with an additional request for a special intense development allocation, or CETA. It's east, on the east side of Walburg Road between Union Cross Road and Business Park Drive. You can see the site is predominantly GIS today. There's one small corner right there that is zoned AG. And to the south is zoned LIS. Of course, the Business Park is also zoned LI and LIS, and that is the location of the park. Probably show it a little bit better on the aerial. There's the Business Park to the west. There's the park, and there's the subject property. It was formerly used as a driving range. You can see, there's a lot of tree cover there now. It hasn't been used for that for quite some time. And interchange is off at the far corner of the property there above Hayes Drive. And then you can see the edge of the Ardog's facility to the south. And this is the Southeast for South County Area Plan update. It was adopted in 2014. While it recognizes the existing zoning for the driving range and the AG zoning that was out there at the time of the plan adoption, it is part of a special ladies' consideration area, or SLUCA, and that SLUCA did recommend that this was an ideal candidate for industrial development due to proximity to Highway 311 and I-74. And Legacy did it also, Legacy 2030 also identified this area as a future industrial opportunity area. And here is the site plan. It proposes a 300,000 square foot industrial building that's going to be, proposed to be used for warehousing. The petitioner is proposing an extension of Business Park Drive internal to the site to the east, and the site will directly access that extension for the public street. And then they're not constructing all the way now because they need to do some additional investigation for how the most appropriate angle to go for a future stream crossing, if that ever continues to develop out. They are showing the enhanced street yards that were recommended for the Ardog site to the south, and the required buffer yards. Again, the stream borders the same property lines. He'll be able to use, the buffer yards will also provide the stream buffer there. These, I'm not going to go into these unless, of course, any of the board members have specific questions. These are the criteria on the left for a CETA approval by the county commissioners, and these are some of staff comments related to that and the staff report. So we did investigate the requirements there and broke that down for both the planning board and county commissioners. And here are the proposed elevations. It's going to be, you know, a concrete panel exterior. It looks similar to the Ardog building that's out there today. The site plan does meet UDO requirements. The rezoning request is generally consistent with the area plan recommendation for, this is an industrial opportunity site, and the call-out by Legacy 2030 for this to be an industrial opportunity area. And with that, staff does recommend approval of this request. I'd be more than happy to break open any particular element of this, or, yes, sir?
What is the CETA amount? What's the amount of the...
That's a great question.
The amount that will come out of the bank of this is the total acreage of the site, which is 23.15 acres.
Okay. Oh, okay. Thank you.
23, okay.
Yeah. Essentially, the bank works is if you, and again, that's, that's the figure, that's the figure I found, and it's a little, it's roughly that. This was a portion of a lot. We'll reconcile on the back end. Our erosion control staff are, they serve as our watershed administrators and keep track of this, but whatever the acreage of the parcel that's being developed, the entire acreage comes out of the bank, so.
It's not just the portion that's...
It's not, because again, you're allowed, you're allowed to go up to 70% impervious on the acreage that you have, so the acreage that you're rezoning comes out of the bank. It doesn't, it doesn't look at the amount of imperviousness. It's the acreage comes out of the bank. That's the easiest way to reconcile it.
Is that a change?
It's the way it should have been done all along. I don't know how it was done in the past, but if it was done any way different in our mind, in the mind of the watershed administrator, it was done incorrectly. The charts that we actually have, the overall bank here, and it's, that's the way it is done, and that's the way it's done in this chart for all projects that have gone through that process. But what that also does is it allows for expansions and things on the, on the site without having to come back through and ask for another CETA.
Okay.
So if you're, if you develop this site at, say, 40% impervious surface, and you want to add an addition, and it's either done as a staff change or a site plan amendment, you don't have to ask for additional CETA as long as you don't go over that 70%.
Thank you.
So is 23 acres coming out, and based on the, the other case, there's 193 acres in the bank?
There's 193 acres in the bank, and I'm actually glad that we actually did a little research on this. The amount we have in the bank, and again, I did this analogy earlier. We have what I would call a checking account and a savings account. If you look at what the, whenever the original 10% allocation was done, based on the acreage in the watershed, let's just use easy acreage. Let's say it was 10,000 acres in that watershed. That means you could develop up to 10% or 1,000 acres at, at 70%. The commissioners took half of that total, so 500, and put it in the checking account to spend immediately. They took another 500 and put it in the savings account for the future. So the 193 that's remaining is out of the checking account. There's still another 500 in the savings account.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Okay. So we only, sorry to belabor, so we only have 100, we have less than 200 acres left?
In the checking account, but we've got 500 in the savings account, so theoretically we've got around 700.
Okay, total.
In, in this basin.
Yeah.
In, just in this basin.
Got it. Got it. Thank you.
Overdraft protection.
That's right. That's right.
I wish you could give our son a last year.
Sounds like we're entering into a financial conversation.
Well, it's just such valuable stuff.
It, it is. And again, I think that's part of the discussion we're going to have on the next case, the case that we will, we will have a hearing on. And again, not that, you know, again, everyone can have their own opinion, but we feel like that since this is an area that was identified for economic development, that's what we should really use it for, our, our businesses, so.
Utilities, everything available, that investment's already been made in that area.
It's in the process, yeah. There was a $20 million grant given by the county, by the state to the county for sewer expansion in southeast Forsyth County, and that's what's happening in the sub-basin right now.
Okay. And the basin is in this southeast portion of the county where a lot is development?
Correct. Abbott's Creek, the Abbott's Creek WS3 watershed is in this area. Correct. Part of it's in Kernersville, part of it's in Forsyth County.
Okay.
Property. Zoning jurisdiction.
Any additional questions for staff? All right, no one has signed up? Is anyone here opposed to this recommendation? Seeing no one, I declare the public hearing closed. What is the motion of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move the planning board find that the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
A motion by Mr. Lamb?
Second.
Second by Ms. Smith. Any discussion? All those in favor sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposeds? Same sign? That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I further move the planning board recommend approval of F-1647.
Of a motion by Mr. Lamb?
Second.
Second by Ms. Smith. Any questions? All those in favor sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposeds? Same sign? That is also unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, we'll now move on to the section C. This is C-1. Case is F-1649. Petitioners Trucker Trace Farms LLC and Elizabeth Tucker. This is the Watkins Ford Road LCID or Land Clearing and Inert Debris Expansion. So again, the site is zoned AG, and they're requesting an electrobody special use permit for an LCID that's greater than two acres. That's the requirement of the UDO. The site itself is 21 acres in total. It's located on the north side of Watkins Ford Road between High Point Road and Watkins Landing Drive. Just to give you a little bit more context, this preliminary approval was in 2018, and this subdivision was not there. So this came in after the original LCID approval. And then to the south, the property is still AG there. And here's the aerial. You can see the existing LCID activity here, further into the site. And you can see, they're still building out phases of this development to the east. And they're proposing to expand further to the south, closer to Watkins Ford Road, and then they're wanting to add this piece of land here, that portion. And the area plan does recommend single-family land uses at a density of zero to eight dwelling units per acre. Here is the proposed site plan. This is the boundary of where the existing approval is for this LCID. And then this is the LCID expansion area going south, so playing right towards Watkins Ford Road. This is the proposed expansion for the accessory activities, so storage and process area of those materials to do a lot of onsite recycling of those materials that come into the site. Showing a new access drive to get to the western portion of that LCID and to the process area. Also proposing an internal access drive to connect those two other access drives, so that way any truck or other activity can go internal to the site and not have to go out onto Watkins Ford Road and then go back into the site. They're showing the required setbacks, and then they are showing the staggered plantings outside of that internal access road with the sediment pond. And just a reminder for this one, because it's an electrobody special use permit, the role of the planning board to verify that the site plan does meet UDO requirements. Staff did find that it met those requirements during its review. Be more than happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, and this is the language of the motion?
Correct.
All right, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move that F-1649 meets UDO requirements and recommend the request move forward to the Forsyth County Commissioners.
A motion by Mr. Lamb? Is there a second for this?
Second.
Second by Ms. Smith? Any discussion? All those in favor sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposeds? Same sign? That is unanimous.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, we're going to move on to our two subdivisions now. So our first case is D-1. This case, 2024-083. I think we probably all know where we're all at here, but this is for the realignment of Deacon Boulevard and Beatty Street. And you can, I just wanted to give you a little more context of the area that we're talking about. Of course, there's the stadium and the Coliseum there and the fairgrounds. There's University Parkway there to the west. And this is the overall site plan, so there's multiple plan sheets. I won't belabor it, but you can kind of see that they're proposing an extension and realignment of several streets in here. I'll go through that in a moment. And then the closure of some of the right-of-way, once the new street network is installed. And then there'll be multiple lots, commercial lots, that face all of these internal streets. This one's a little bit less busy, probably a little bit easier to see. Everything highlighted in yellow, that is either an existing public street or an extension of a new public street. So they're going to close where 32nd Street comes in now, and then they're going to reroute it and extend it all the way through the site to go out to University, right where it turns out to Cherry Street there. This is a proposed private street to connect these two major internal roads. That's a realignment of Deacon Boulevard there. And then this is a new small connector between, public street connector between Beatty Street and that new Deacon View Drive private street to interconnect these. So there are several, several new realimements and extensions of public right-of-way, and then several closures of old public rights-of-way. As you can imagine, this site has had a lot of history, so they're trying to clean that up by closing those other rights-of-way. All the, all these closures will be contingent on other permitting through DOT and engineering. I'm going to briefly go through all the slides of this. This is the 32nd Street extension on the western side, so this crosses over the stream here, and then it interconnects with that private street there to the south. And this is the eastern leg of that, so this is 32nd Street where it will continue further east and then connect in. So that's kind of where that begins. There's the stadium there to the south. This is where Deacon Boulevard will interconnect, and they're pitching a little bit further north to kind of make this intersection, make it work a little bit better for the signalization. So you can see, that's where the existing right-of-way is, that's hatched, and then they're going to push that further north, and then it will continue on. And then it will turn further back to the east and continue on through the property where it exists today. And there'll be another private street that goes further up the north to connect to the 32nd Street extension as well. And it is a 12-lot commercial subdivision, so again, those are actually allowed without a planning board review. So the purpose here really is, it's because of the public streets, because they're fronting on the new public streets. So that's the purpose of this major subdivision review. Be more than happy to highlight any sections you have questions about or answer any questions. Of course, TIA is ongoing. It was submitted, a preliminary TIA along with a parking study, and that will be revised and reviewed as different lots come online through the permitting process.
Are there any questions? Mr. So?
Yes, sir, just one, please. Just want to understand that even though what we are all looking at shows some, some boundaries of proposed parcels, that the developer is not necessarily tied to those, to those boundaries on a lot-by-lot basis?
That is correct.
Okay, yeah. I just want to be sure that they've got the flexibility to respond to what comes next. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Is there a reason why the TIA wasn't required for us to be able to make this decision?
It was required as far as being submitted. The issue is, it doesn't, the act of subdividing the property and creating the public streets generates no traffic. You've got existing traffic that's there. The act of actually developing the site is where the TIA is most important. We actually had an internal meeting yesterday with the developer, both the local team and the team out of Atlanta, along with NC DOT, Winston-Salem DOT, Wake Forest Engineering, Winston-Salem DOT, if I didn't say that already, planning on it. And they're, basically, it's a thousand-page document, so it's a lot to digest. There was a good dialogue and discussion yesterday, and there were a few requests to modify and/or examine a couple more things. There are conditions of approval specifically related to the TIA and future issuance of permits, and that is consistent with, generally speaking, how things are. This isn't a rezoning request, so the actual traffic generators in and of themselves need to be addressed. So again, it will be prior to issuance of permits, but like I said, they are in the process of refining that, and I believe they, there was a commitment to get that back to us within the next month.
So as long as there's no change in the zoning use, this is what we just typically see?
Correct. Again, because this isn't a rezoning, you know, the TIA looks at the future development, it looks at the existing, you know, the existing items that are there, looking at the, obviously the intense traffic needs of football, basketball, and all those things. It takes all into account. The redevelopment and the changes to the actual street network conceptually have been approved. There just are some details and things that need to be worked out as far as traffic operations, you know, two left versus one left, you know, dual right. Is that going to be a game day operation thing, or is that what's the, that's what's going to be all the time? Those are the kind of details that are still left to be worked out, which again, is more closely aligns with issuance of future permits.
And we are, this is in front of us because it's a proposed plat?
It's in front of you because there are new public streets that are, new and/or realigned public streets. So in order for a public street to be approved, there has to be a subdivision that comes through the planning board for review and approval. If they weren't removing the public streets and they were creating 100 lots out here and it's commercial, they could have done this without coming to you. It's just the fact that there are some new and/or realigned public streets is why this is before the planning board.
And then why is the blue not going to be a dedicated street? The blue road, the connector? I'm just interested.
That was an internal decision that they made.
Okay.
If it, if it serves any purpose, that is entirely internally serving to the site. So in a way, it's arguable that it's a, that's for net public good because they have to maintain it.
Okay.
That's one way to look at it. Again, there's arguments either way, but that was what they proposed.
Okay. And you don't need to say, "Staff recommends approval" or anything like that?
I could say that the site plan does meet UDO requirements, Mr. Lamb.
All right, I move approval.
Second.
All right, any additional questions? All those in favor sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposeds? That is one.
I'm sorry, who was opposed?
Okay. Motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, and then our last item on the consent agenda for tonight is D-2. That is subdivision case 2024-096. A petitioner is requesting a 38-watt major subdivision and an AG zoning district. This is located in Growth Management Area 5, just west of the YR District and Yak and River. So it's just off-site there. Can see the two separate, long cul-de-sac streets. Just want to mention, staff worked with the engineer for the applicant and our engineering staff to determine the feasibility of interconnecting those two, and that was deemed prohibitive to the development. Again, in general, the UDO does require the interconnectivity. They are showing an additional stub where there's undeveloped property, should that ever come online. In this case, this is in a rural area in Growth Management Area 5, and they did approve from an engineering standpoint the prohibitive cost of providing that additional infrastructure. And therefore, staff felt that it met that requirement for not, for not showing it. So again, it's a large lot rural subdivision. It meets all other UDO requirements, and staff does recommend approval on that basis.
Move approval.
Motion by Mr. Lamb? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Smith? Any discussion? All those in favor sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposeds? Same sign? That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, we'll now move to the public hearing items.
Mr. Chairman, we'll now go back to item B-8, case F-1645.
Good evening, everybody. So today's case is F-1645. The petitioner is Charles William Pettit, Evelyn Pettit, and Charles and Dawn Pettit Revocable Trust. The site is approximately 39.85 acres, located at the terminus of Furman Drive. Their request is for a general use rezoning from AG to RS-20. The site is located in GMA 3 suburban neighborhoods. The site is adjacent to existing RS-20 and AG-zoned single-family neighborhoods. The proposed RS-20 zoning district is compatible with the surrounding land use pattern. The subject property is relatively flat, with majority of the site cleared and some existing trees. In addition, the South Fork Muddy Creek runs along the northern property line. The site is located within the South Suburban Area Plan, which recommends single-family residential land use at a density of zero to eight units per acre. This is looking west into the subject property. This photo is also looking west into subject property, however, a little farther into it. The last one is looking south from the subject property and an existing single-family home adjacent to the property. In summary, the proposed request is consistent with the recommendations of Legacy 2030 for promoting compatible infill development in the serviceable land area. The proposed rezoning is consistent with the land use recommendation of the South Suburban Area Plan update. Lastly, the request would allow for needed additional housing at an appropriate location in GMA 3. For these reasons, staff does recommend approval. Does the planning board have any questions regarding this case?
Any questions? All right, thank you. So we will have a public hearing on this case. Again, each side will have a total of 12 minutes. The opponents, there are 11 individuals signed up to speak, and it's going to be very difficult for 11 of you to speak within 12 minutes. So first, thank you for coming. We recognize you. It may be wise to select one or two participants to speak on your behalf, if you have someone you trust and would like to do that. I see people looking around at somebody, so that's always a good sign. But we will now go into our public hearing, and we will turn to the proponent, and we have Charles Pettit to speak. If you will approach the podium, state your name, address, and zip code for the record, and please tell us about your case.
Yes, Charles Pettit. 4234 Thomasville Road, 27107. And so the request is for the change because we have looked at this property and have decided that we would love to use it for this purpose. We looked at the fact that it connects to Furman Drive, and as I began to look at how we might use this property, I thought about the fact that it looked like that was intended to run parallel to Langdon. There's also a connector at Luck Drive, and then also a major sewer line at the northern edge of the property that runs along South Fork of the Muddy Creek. And started thinking about how we would use that and settled on RS-20 as our request because it seemed that two houses per acre would match a lot of what's already there in the community and would be, I think, beneficial for a lot of us that live there, including myself, because I am at the adjoining property as well. Any questions?
Any questions for Dr. Pettit? All right, how much time is left?
11 minutes.
About 11 minutes left. Would anyone else like to speak in support? All right, well, we will now move to opposition. I can go through all of the names, unless you all have someone you would like to designate as a speaker? All right. If you don't mind approaching the podium, and please state your name, address, and zip code for the record.
Hello, everyone. I'm Caitlin Shipe, 4121 Langdon Drive, Winston-Salem, 27107. First of all, good afternoon. I'd like to, we've come here today to learn more about Dr. Pettit's investment and to address some concerns. I would first like to say thank you for allowing the community into this meeting and hearing our concerns. The existing neighborhood is occupied by homeowners who have lived here for quite some time. Some have built their homes and have been here for approximately 50, 50 years, give or take. Our first concern we'd like to address is concern for safety. Neighbors are requesting a formal traffic study performed by NC DOT. Just in the past two months, we've had just a mile down the road, two motorcyclists injured, one killed. One was ran over by a truck yesterday morning, actually. And to piggyback onto that, there's been several accidents at the top of Southland, which is the access from Thomasville Road 109. And we've had, if you pull, several years ago, there was a child killed there waiting for their bus. for their bus. There are two noticeable blind spots at the top of Southland and Willard. Willard is across from Southland, causing more probability for accidents there. You know, just recently, rumble strips have been added to Thomasville Road, Highway 109, because of so many accidents caused by crossing left of center there. 109, if you haven't been out that way, is a very congested area already. We do have several children in our neighborhood that do have to walk to the top of the street of Southland there in 109 to access their bus stop. Buses do not come into the neighborhood. There's not room for them to turn around inside the neighborhood. Current speed limit in our neighborhood is about 35 miles an hour. So adding 160 more drivers, give or take, that's giving two cars per household, endangers the children, the neighbors who walk just for exercise, or walking their animals. And currently, our neighborhood roads are not wide enough to accommodate this much traffic. We do have a few questions. Who will repair the road if damaged during construction? Where will the water run off? Will there be a drainage pond? Who will service that drainage pond? Will different, like mosquitoes and types of things, will that be addressed as well? Will there be a fence added to the 20-foot buffer existing between new homes and the existing community? We're not comfortable with just trees being added there, just because during season change, that will take away any privacy that we do have currently. And then just a note to make is there's been previous break-ins in the neighborhood already. So adding more expensive homes and 78 more properties will probably bring a little bit more crime into the neighborhood. And that's all that I have. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Caitlin. Does anyone have any questions for? So it's just the traffic issues tend to be Southland and Thomasville is that kind of where it?
So as you drive into the neighborhood, Southland will turn into Langdon Drive. If you visit that property, that road is not wide enough. We already have issues there with traffic coming in and out of the property. It's a very sharp curve. The curve is not wide enough to even accommodate two vehicles at this time, so we do have to pull over and allow one to pass before going through. And Southland is a continuance onto a gravel drive, so there's not a stop sign there. Southland actually has the right-of-way, but not many know that, so that becomes a traffic issue turning from Southland into Langdon.
Okay. Okay. Any additional questions? Thank you, Caitlin. How much time is left?
Nine minutes.
So we have nine minutes left for opposition, if anyone else would like to speak. All right, ma'am, and then sir, after you.
My name is Melinda Waller, 4152 Langdon Drive, Winston-Salem, North Carolina. The road that we're speaking of, yes, there was a child killed waiting on the bus, and if you go up there and wait, there are blind spots. You cannot see the buses stopping, coming either direction. There will be a blind spot. So it is very dangerous. The only way out of that property is out Furman Drive. You're putting 250 cars in the morning and in the afternoon out a road where we have to stop and pull over to allow each other. It's kind of like a one-way straight, depends on which way you're going and the courtesy of the person coming at you. And so we, you would have to widen Furman, Langdon, and Southland to allow for this property with putting a stoplight out on Highway 109 to allow the access. There are many mornings you will wait five minutes or more before you can pull out. And so it is a dangerous area, and we do have photos that we can share with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from Ms. Waller?
Can I just say one thing, Jeff? I mean, sorry, Chris.
Yes.
Unfortunately, this is just like a rule of thumb, just so that you guys can hear it, the more cars that you have, the more attention you get from DOT. So it's like, almost like it trips a certain amount of, with trips, and then you get some traffic mitigation to go along with that. So more people will help the case of making those improvements. I'm not saying it's a guarantee, but that's how you get those, a stop sign or?
You would have to take part of each of our frontage to widen those, and are my taxes paying for the widening of the road for him to?
I, I, I'm not saying any of that. I'm just saying, like, just so that you guys know, like, to go from a stop sign to a stoplight, you have to generate many, many more trips to go to that more intensive, like, traffic mitigation opportunity.
Thank you.
How much time is left?
Eight minutes.
Eight minutes. So I think you were next, and then? So we have eight minutes left.
My name's Gerald Wood. I live at 4039 Langdon Drive, 27107.
Sir.
Everybody here that's from my neighborhood, raise your hand? We're here because you're looking to build some new houses and destroy a neighborhood while you're building a new neighborhood. There is no access to this area. Y'all don't know what it is? We do, we live there. Our roads are too narrow for two cars to drive between each other without getting close to the mailboxes. I've been run, almost run into twice by trucks going down there because they're going down there at 45, and I'm trying to come up at 30. That's the thing in the neighborhood. There is no Luck Drive. I live next to Luck Drive. There ain't one. Y'all can make one. There is no access out of this neighborhood except down Furman, right onto Langdon, right around Southland, and on to Highway 109. A road that was about six years ago, proposed to become a four-lane because there's so much traffic on it. We sit at that road. You sit there in the morning? I work in that industrial park where y'all gonna build a new building. I'm gonna be. I have to get out there on that road every morning. I look down the road, and I look beyond the blind spot because I see the cars on the other side of the hill, because I know how many it's gonna take for I can get out. That's in the morning. Evening, try turning left going down to Winston-Salem, because now I got both ways. Here's the problem. That's not the worst. At an angle is Willard Road. Not right across, at an angle. I've got to judge what he's doing because he wants to get out there too. He wants to go this way, I want to go that way. Traffic's coming this way. That intersection will kill you if you drew it long enough. There is no access to this property onto a safe road. You have to realize that. I understand a man wants to build houses and make money. I work, I make money. But you can't destroy our neighborhood to build another one. It's not safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Any questions for Mr. Wood?
I'd be glad to answer them. I've been here before.
Thank you. How much time is left?
Six minutes.
I have six minutes left.
Is it my turn?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm Robert Wiener. I have the Legacy Stables and Events Center, 4100 block of Thomasville Road. I've invested over $5 million in that facility, and I do weddings, 80 to 100 a year. Have big, big events, and what I do to make them flow right, I've got three, four accesses into my property, and I've got policemen I have bring in or, you know, to help the traffic go through. In order to make this deal work, as I see, you're gonna have to have a traffic cop up there 24/7, really. Because he's right, Willard goes directly into the Thurman. Matter of fact, the other day, I was going down Willard Road into Thomasville Road, I had to sit 10 minutes. It was 4:30 in the afternoon, and I'd said 10 minutes to turn right. I mean, it's unbelievable. And if you put 80 houses in there, and I think you could do more according to the zoning, he could put 80 a lot. I mean, he's not tied down to two a lot, is he? I mean, he, he says he wants to put 80 houses. It could end up being 200 with the RS20, right?
Half, half a girl.
I think it is, okay. Anyhow, we'll debate that later. But I got on the phone, and I talked to the traffic, Assistant Traffic Engineer, his name is Dusty Bard, and he said, "We got a problem on Thomasville Road. We put in some, they call them rumble strips, all up and down the road to slow people down, and hopefully they won't go off the road." Well, it hasn't slowed anybody down. That's 45 miles an hour on that road, and I promise you, if you, you track it one week, you'll find out that 70% of the people are going over 45. And it bottlenecks, we have, we've, this year alone, in talking to the, to the board, of the, Dusty Bard, there's been 24 accidents in this little area that we're talking about, from Willard down to the church. They just, last week, there were, there was a car coming up, going to town, running 60, 70 miles an hour, flipped over right in front of my place. Luckily, nobody got hurt. I mean, unfortunately, Thomasville Road's becoming a death trap. I got all these millions of dollars invested in continuing business and putting 200 more cars on that, on that road. Now, everybody who spoke about the neighborhood, I don't need to talk about that because they're 100% right, and they put their money, just like I did mine. Now, we're trying to protect our own investment at the, at the privilege of somebody else making money. And I make money, I want people to make money. But I also have a feeling for all these people that y'all are crowding their neighborhood and, and making it unsafe. It's really something y'all need to relook. I mean, that's, the traffic is deadly on that street. I'm gonna let you go, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Wiener. How much time is, prefer, any questions? All right, how much time is left?
Two minutes.
Two minutes.
Thomas Eugene Reed, 4064 Thomasville Road, Winston-Salem, 27107, joins from a property that is tied with Mr. Pettit's land. For my two minutes, I'm gonna be short and brief because I know you got a job to do. I can't stop development. I probably won't because our farm of 115, 20 acres will probably be developed with the extension of the proposed street into it at some time point or another. Our land was in a farmland preservation program for 25 years, agreed to by the county and the state. We, we chose to lease that farmland preservation rather than sell it out for 99 years. It ended about four or five, about five years ago. I have no objection to development at all, but what they're speaking of, of safety on this road is a major issue. And if I remember correctly, I was confronted by a real estate agent back six and a half, seven years ago, when a proposed development of this exact property, the exact same property with a new owner and another person to develop it, came to me and wanted to buy a 60-foot easement from the corner up here, all the way across my property to Fox Metal Lane. And I asked the reasoning, and they said because the state had recommended that no development be added to that Furman Drive-Langdon Road area, and it was denied. So I'm assuming, I wasn't at that meeting, but I'm assuming the planning board at that time denied that request, or somebody did, a county commissioner, is a good friend of mine here in Forsyth County, said it was denied, so I had to trust their judgment. I don't see the major changes that have taken place to offset the issues that were at that time denied by the DOT. I might ask you a question. When that happens, then I'd say the change to 109 and the traffic issues that are there, then maybe you could address an issue of adding more houses in our area and leaving them in the county rather than being annexed into the city. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I think we're out of time. Yes, we're, we're out of time, I'm sorry.
He has a big school there, from the church, this is the minister.
I'm very familiar with the great Dr. Beatty. I know him very well. That's not up to me, sir, because the time has been expired, I'm sorry.
Then you take that acceleration. The other guy didn't take 11 minutes of his 12, so we got time to listen to the guy who really could add some light to this. One minute or two is not gonna break any of us. What do y'all think of it?
What is the, what is the pleasure of the board?
Be happy with a minute of time.
A minute?
A minute. That's a minute.
Dr. Beatty, we will give you a minute of time. If you don't mind stating for the record, for those who don't know you, your, your name, address, and zip code for the record.
All right, I gotta get into preaching mode here for one minute. I'm Ron Beatty, pastor of the Brehem Baptist Church. I have been there for 44 years.
I'm sorry, excuse me, your zip code, sir?
27107.
Thank you, Dr. Beatty.
I can assure you that this is one of the most dangerous roads in Forsyth County. About 500 feet north of our driveway, not long ago, an individual was killed. Last week, a car turned over right, right in front of our property. We have a Christian school at our church. We have multitudes of cars coming in and out, AM and PM, and I tried to get out of our driveway last week to get on Highway 109, and I sat there with traffic coming south out of Winston-Salem, going north towards Winston-Salem. I sat there seven or eight minutes, just trying to get on the highway to go north. And if I was going to go south, I might still be sitting there. It's unreal how much traffic. And here's the thing that concerns me, and this is something we need to consider. Statement was made a while ago, that if we get more houses in there and get more traffic in there, maybe the Department of Transportation will take a look at it. What that actually means is we're already having people killed there. Do we need to get more people killed on the highway to get more people from the Department of Transportation to look into it? I don't think that's a good philosophy. I think we'd need to stall this thing. There needs to be some kind of traffic consideration. I know that the Department of Transportation has been looking into this. Yeah, I'm about finished. This is my invitation. I know, I know, I know that the Department of Transportation has been looking into this. I have attended two meetings, and they realize that it's a problem on Highway 109. Now, you may stand to your feet while we have the invitation.
Thank you so much, Dr. Beatty. Before I entertain thoughts from the board, Mr. Murphy, there've been a lot of talk about traffic. Can you address any of this for our purposes, of what has transpired or what will transpire as far as traffic?
I mean, obviously, this is a general use request.
Right.
So traffic is hard to, hard to account for whenever you don't have a plan and there's not anything to react to, because there's nothing for an NC, an NC or a Winston-Salem DOT to review. Obviously, the way development works, and again, if this were to be approved, or even if it wasn't, and it's, it remains the zoning that it is, and someone does a subdivision on it, there will be a review that's handled by the DOTs respectively. And again, this is in the county, so it wouldn't go to the city, but it would go to NC DOT. If it were in the city, it would actually go to both. So, you know, what they do is, you know, you basically have an underlying right of something that is allowed under the zoning ordinance. So under the existing zoning, they're allowed, I believe, around 43 homes, whenever, by the time you do the math. So, you know, the DOT at this point would be compelled to issue a permit for a driveway permit, an extension of the public roads, and, but could ask for mitigation if there were things that the development in and of itself were going to cause. If they were going to create a, if they were going to create a intersectional failure at Thomasville Road, i.e. 109 and Southland, then they could require mitigation and improvements to that intersection commensurate with the impact that the development's gonna have. This is a general use request, so under a zoning, for, under a general use rezoning, there's not really a lot of consideration that can be given to mitigation efforts because it's a change from one general use category to another. In this case, going from a little bit of sliver of RS20 and predominantly AG to RS20. That, in and of itself, the 39.85 or whatever it was acres, equals a maximum number of homes of 86, whenever you do the math. The RS20 zoning is one unit for every 20,000 square feet of lot area. So the request that's before you is to go essentially double. It's not out of character with the zoning that's in place here. It's RS20, and those homes, while they're not exactly half an acre, they range, I mean, some of them are an acre in size, but there may be a couple lots that have been combined. Most of them range from around half an acre, 0.5 acres, up to 0.7 acres. So you're looking at 24. looking at twenty-four thousand to thirty thousand square foot lots, for the most part. Not, not necessarily that out of character with what's being requested. To get back to your original question, there's not a lot of consideration, obviously, you can take it into consideration for your recommendation, the elected body can take it into consideration whenever the rezoning gets approved, obviously, you know, there very well, and it sounds like there are issues out there, the problem is, it's hard to, you, you can't tie any type of improvement to a general use request. Um, so, at the end of the day, it comes down to consistency with the plan, and whether or not there is a belief that what is being requested is reasonable and in the public The other thi, two other things, you know, looking at the, the lot, uh, the, the street width of twenty feet is consistent with the requirements and the ordinance for existing ribbon paved streets, they are existing NC DOT streets, uh, and, you know, there is a presumption of that is adequate, uh, till it's proven that it's not. The other thing that I would speak, that, that was mentioned during the public hearing related to, and, believe it or not, that wasn't four or five years ago, that was two-thousand and three, so, over twenty-one years ago, there was a request, F thirteen-seventy-nine, that was a, a substantial portion of this subject property, but at that point, the request was to go from AG to RS-nine, which would be almost a five-fold increase. That ultimately was what was denied, and the, the staff recommendation was for denial, the planning board recommended denial, I'm not sure what happened at the elected body, if it was actually denied or not, oh, it was, I'm sorry, I see, it was denied on February twenty-fourth of two thousand and three. So not, it, it was the same piece of property, but a different request.
All right, thank you. Ms. Smith, I think you had a question.
The next step, if this were approved, would be?
Subdivision.
Subdivision review.
I'm sorry, can you get on your mic?
No, I'm sorry, the next step would be subdivision review.
Subdivision review and approval.
Or the traffic. What would be looked at, just so people would know?
Yeah, again, I'm not an NC DOT expert, I don't pretend to be, I'm not a dri, I'm not an engineer, but, you know, basically, they would look at the layout of the subdivision that, in and of itself, but then they would also look at where that connection is going to go back onto the main line. And again, as you've heard, I'm not sure what the status of, uh, the improvements to one-oh-nine slash, um, Thomasville Road are, there, at one point, you know, there is, at one point, there was a TIP project for, um, some options, widen in place, realignment on a portion of it, um, and I'm not exactly sure, it's Davidson County, Forsyth County, I'm not sure exactly how that shook out where, uh, but obviously, you know, I believe there is a, a recognition that there is a lot of traffic on Thomasville Road, so, it may result in having decel lanes, perhaps a dedicated left turn over, if you're traveling nor, you know, traveling north towards Winston, there could be a, a turn lane, but all that is determined by warrants based on the, the traffic increase expected with the development. And keep in mind, it's not the total number of trips, it's the increase in trips, so, under the base zoning, if you could have forty-three homes, what does that traffic look like? Well, through the, through the rezoning, essentially, it would be looking at that, that increase. But again, that's, that's how NC DOT would look at it, but you are correct, if this were ultimately approved by the elected body, the next step would be to have to submit a, a subdivision, whether it be a straight subdivision or a planned residential development like the, like the ones we approved earlier, that would come back to this board for consideration, and that's something that, you know, again, as NC DOT would review that, there would be comments, and there would be requirements if there were things that needed to be done.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, for clarification's sake, it appears to me that there are two topics being discussed and felt here right now. One is, what impact will this rezoning have, if any? The other is, what does a neighbor do to solve the existing problem, whether this subdivision is ever approved or not? Or if, whether this rezoning is ever approved or not? Um, my understanding is, we are being asked to consider the rezoning of the property, which in and of itself, um, today is largely residential, it will be completely residential, but that doesn't provide any assurance to any developer or any owner for anything until they come back with a subdivision plan. During which time, I would encourage everyone that, that is as passionate as you are to, um, uh, invite NC DOT to church. Uh, and, uh, and, and see how, how you can work together to address the current issues in addition to those which might follow.
I'm, I'm sorry, sir, um, Mr. Reason, the public hearing is closed. Any other, thanks, uh, Mr. Murphy, were you done with your? Oh, yes, yes. All right. Any other questions?
What's the byright in ag? Is it like a forty thousand foot lot?
It's, it's a forty thousand square foot lot, the, the difference between ag and RS-forty, and again, you could get, you could do a PRD, the, the difference between ag and RS-forty is ag requires a hundred and fifty foot lot width, and RS-forty requires a hundred foot lot width, but again, the, the, the base density is one unit for every forty thousand square feet, so, under ag zoning, it's, you could get forty-three units based on the thirty-nine point eight-five.
Okay, and we don't know the, the capacity of one-oh-nine, do we? We don't know what the?
We don't, because it wasn't, it wasn't part of, it wasn't part of the request.
Okay.
Okay, I just wanna clarify for myself one more time, because it's been a long day and I didn't get a lot of sleep last night. Um, so, we will have another pass at this, if this moves to subdivision for approval, at, at which time, we will have an opportunity to review remarks or, um, mitigation efforts by NC DOT to look at some of the concerns that were brought forth today.
Correct, with a caveat, keep in mind, there's a rational nexus test, so, you know, if the, if the development that, you know, let's say this were, let's say the planning board were to recommend approval and the elected body approved it, and then, six months, a year, two years, however long down the road, a subdivision review came through, and you had angst, and, and, you know, and, and someone wanted to put a traffic signal out here, well, first of all, it would, it more, and again, I don't know whether it would meet the warrants or not, but the development of eighty-six homes in and of itself would not warrant the installation of a traffic signal, and it wouldn't pass, pass the rational nexus test, in other words, you could not make the developer bear the burden of doing that. But again, within, within reason and things that pass that rational nexus test, yes, there would be, the opportunity, NC DOT would weigh in on improvements that they felt like were necessary to address the increase in traffic, and again, that's something that the developer could determine whether or not that's something that they want to do, or they could just say, no, that's too much, we're gonna walk away, but at the end of the day, there would be some checks and balances within reason.
Okay, thank you.
But, but we would have the opportunity to recommend denial on the subdivision.
If, if.
If it meets the orders?
Again, it's, it's, this is one of those things where, for a subdivision, it either meets it or it doesn't, and in order to say that they meet it, it's part of the, part of the driveway review and permit approval process, they would show those plans, NC DOT, and say, yes, if it were a planning board review item, i.e. a PRD, there are some, there are some conditions that can be added, and if the developer chooses not to do those, it's, they can say, you're gonna do this, and if they don't agree to it, then we're gonna recommend denial. But again, it still would have to be something that would pass that rational nexus test, you couldn't say, you've got to put in a roundabout, or a stoplight, or you've got to widen one-oh-nine a mile in each direction, that would not pass that rational nexus test, it has to specifically be related to the impact the development would have.
Yeah, and forty, and forty more car, or forty more lots is not gonna make any difference to one-oh-nine, but it is gonna make a difference to the intersection of Furman and Langdon.
Yeah, okay.
It'll make a big difference for them, but, and so, we've had similar cases of issues like this very recently, where, by the time the subdivision did come in, the connections and the current conditions of the connecting roads didn't really seem to pass muster, or was really putting a burden on the neighborhood, and so, therefore, we, well, I know I voted against it, but I can't remember how everybody else did, so, you know, 'cause we've already said, you know, the, the zoning, the general land use, the zoning, is in keeping with the surrounding area, but, so, really, saying no doesn't have as much warrant there, but, by the time it gets to the point with the subdivision, we can talk more about design, and the issues that the neighbors have brought up can be considered to some extent, or how the roads are connected, the new road, the old road, connected, things like that.
You're, you're a hundred percent correct, and obviously, obviously, the, the property owners here, I'm not sure if it's their intention to, to develop themselves, or convey it to someone else, but certainly, they've heard the concerns, and again, I think that they would have the ability to determine whether or not, you know, what, what type of improvements they could make that might, uh, address some of those concerns.
Okay.
And in the meantime, you can go to NC DOT.
Mr. Stillman, could you move up to your mic?
I'm sorry, yes, sir, and again, I would encourage everyone concerned, in the meantime, to reach out to NC DOT to talk about the currently existing issues you're having. I think the two have to be treated somewhat separately, or dealt with separately.
And, and keep in mind, this, you know, and I don't know what the planning board's gonna do, but this is a recommendation, this will move on to the county commissioners in the future, and if you signed up today, you will get notice of that, so the actual decision is not today, the actual decision will be in front of the county commissioners, uh, so I just wanna make sure, I know you read that earlier, but I wanted to reiterate that.
All right, okay. Are there any other questions? Uh, is the board ready to make a motion? All right.
Mr. Chairman, I move the planning board find that the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Motion by Mr. Lamb is their second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Smith. Any questions? All those in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposees? That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I further move the planning board recommend approval of F one-six-four-five.
A motion by Mr. Lamb is their second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Smith, any discussion? All those in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposees? That is unanimous. So we're gonna take a moment while the chamber can clear.
It was eight.
Yeah, that was.
That's hard to hear.
They cannot afford any road maintenance, they've already made us aware of that, so if there's any road changes, they cannot afford it, and they cannot afford to do this neighborhood unless they do eighty houses.
So, is this okay?
I'll defer to the chairman on that.
Uh, do we need to go in the, we don't need to, can I just say, go, go ahead, go ahead.
Sorry.
I'm okay, but.
No, I'm good.
Oh, that's like, I look at her, she's like.
I know, we also have people here to speak on it, hopefully in court.
Oh, wow.
My question yesterday.
Mr. Chairman, do you want us to go ahead? I'm wait, I let Mr. Stillman. Yeah, I wanna honor what I allowed him to do. Mr. Smith, we're ready for you now.
Good afternoon, everybody, uh, this is case, huh? Okay, sorry, uh, this is case F sixteen forty-six, the petitioners are Front Street Walburg LLC. Uh, the request is for a seven-point-two acre site located at the southeast intersection of Walburg Road, Hayes Drive, and Union Cross Road. Uh, it is a special use rezoning request from AG Agricultural and GI Special Use to Highway Business Special Use. Site is located in the southeastern corner of the county, N G M A four. Uh, the yellow here does highlight the area of the subject parcel that's being rezoned through this request, again, the park to the south is rezoned, well, we considered that case a little bit earlier today. Um, as you can see, the site is currently zoned AG predominantly, with a little bit of GIS right here, uh, there is residential zoning to the north and to the east, with industrial zoning to the south and further south and southwest, and then there's institutional zoning right across the street to the west, which is the, um, Union Cross Park. The area limit shows that this is a currently forested lot, um, there's not anything currently going on there. Um, again, you can see the park to the west and the residential to the northwest, as well as, uh, currently undeveloped land here, and as Brian pointed out earlier, the remnants of the, uh, driving range that used to be right here as well. Um, similar to the previous case, the area plan does recommend commercial recreation land uses that reflects the, uh, previous driving range that was on site. Um, however, the site is located within the specially, special land use condition area, asterisk, asterisk AH, which does state that this parcel and other nearby parcels within this, uh, boundary right here, uh, would be appropriate for an industrial or business type park. The following are some, uh, site photos, um, again, there aren't too many, because it's a very busy road, um, but this is looking south along Walburg Road, the subject property is to the left, this is looking the other way, looking north along Walburg Road, the subject property is to the right, and then along Hayes Street, uh, this is looking west, the subject property is to the left over here. Um, the site's primary access point along Hayes Road is gonna be right here off to the And then this is the site plan for the request, um, there are two access points for this request, uh, this western access point right here off of Walburg Road is going to be right in, right out only, uh, due to the median that the TIA and NC DOT will, are requiring. Um, the access that I mentioned earlier off of Hayes Drive will be full access, um, there will be no limitations, uh, for cars coming in and out of that access point. Um, there are internal sidewalks proposed, and these internal sidewalks do connect to the external public sidewalks that'll be constructed as part of this project as well. All the MVSA landscaping buffer yard and other requirements currently meet the U D O, and these will be verified again during commercial permitting if this project is approved, or this rezoning is approved, my apologies. Um, similar to the other case, um, we have this chart just showing the, uh, special intense development allocation, or CETA, um, criteria, as well as staff comments regarding those criteria for this project, um, they were included in the staff report. The project may not meet site CETA criteria, uh, sorry, the project may not meet CETA criteria due to the requested use's non-conformance of Legacy twenty-thirty in the area plan, uh, the piecemeal development model, uh, the relatively minor economic impact of the project, and the potential for environmental impacts within a public supply watershed, uh, the project does have great transportation access due to its proximity to the I seventy-four Union Cross interchange. So in summary, the request would require the use of limited CETA bank land that could be better used for economic development within the Abbott's Creek watershed, uh, the request will have a significant traffic impact on the level of service rating for nearby roads and intersections, the request may encourage strip commercial development where comprehensive industrial development is recommended, and in conclusion, the request is inconsistent with the recommendations of Legacy twenty-thirty and the southeast Forsyth County area plan update. Um, staff does recommend denial of the CETA request and the zoning request and the site Staff does recommend denial of the CETA request and the zoning request, and the site plan does meet UDO requirements. And I'm more than happy to answer any questions that you all may have.
So the reason for the denial is, can you go back to that?
Sure. For the rezoning request or for the CETA request?
For the CETA request.
So these first four criteria right here are the ones that staff had concern about. The one that did play in their favor is this fifth one, that is the good transportation access for the site to the I-74 Union Cross Interchange, which I can go back to the map. It's very close by. I think you can see it on some of the maps previously. Yeah, so this is the parcel and the interchange is right there. So it's very close.
And so for us, we have to approve or deny if it's consistent with the comp plan and, you know, our normal recommendation. The county commissioners have to prove the CETA constraint, criteria.
Yes, sir.
Right, okay. And so the denial is essentially that being a small parcel and creating not a lot of jobs, it's not worth using CETA land.
That's correct, Mr. Feerby. Just to add to what Mr. Smith stated and kind of the discussion that we had on the previous case, that CETA bank, while we are using the checking account rather than the savings account, to use Chris's analogy, it is a finite resource. This is an area where through state largess and local community kind of diligence, we have received support for bringing sewer to this area. And the staff believes it would be best to allocate that capacity to something that was a true economic impact generating type of project.
How much would it use? I mean, the last one used 23 out of our bank dollars. How many acres?
Seven.
Seven point two.
Yes, ma'am. You know, getting beyond just that bank in and of itself, but again, does this set up for someone else to come in and ask for the next parcel to do the same thing? And again, then we're, you know, we're creating a commercial area versus creating an industrial and a job center area. It's not like there's not a recognition. Nick, can you go back to the area plan?
Yes, sir.
It's not like there's not a recognition and that we're trying to preserve all four corners in ag or anything else. If you look on that, if you look, the red area right there, there is a four acre area that's recommended for retail commercial on one of the four corners of the interchange. It's just not this corner. So again, that gets to where our recommendation is for is, you know, we've identified an area Forsyth County has received state funds for $20 million for sewer. We say we need jobs and economic development. And, you know, the petitioner who is requesting this is one of the folks who has done a lot of that in the space. It's just our belief that this isn't the appropriate land use here. They've known that whenever they submitted, obviously it's amicable. We have, you know, we work with them and we'll bring them through the process. But, you know, this is not a surprise. We told them upfront that we would not be supportive of this, which is why they brought it through as two requests versus one. Because again, the other requests that you considered earlier, we think is right within the wheelhouse of the area plan recommendation. It's just we don't think that this is the appropriate use here.
So it's just a couple acres, seven acres, that either would have been a little extra added on top of the industrial just south of it or parking. Now, my one, so I understand the CETA concept, but on the other end, you have a large industrial business park area. They're adding sidewalks. Somebody could walk and get coffee or lunch. I'm, I know I'm going down the road a little bit, but, or some convenience to all these people who are working in this area or come, soon to be working in this area. It does seem like a useful amenity to me versus someone having to drive across the highway and potentially, you know, that four acres that we say could or could not be the commercial. So it does have use.
I would just like to add to that. We're basically right now, specific to this case, talking about seven acres. What these maps don't expand out far enough to show you is there's already 400 or, and 400 plus acres nearly fully developed with many companies, with many employees. And to the east of that, on the other side of Wahlberg Road, more of that coming. And there are no business services there for anyone. Be it on this corner or the, or the opposite corner, it's sort of like DOT's backlog of issues. We're behind in serving the people out here. We recently approved a substantially larger convenient marked truck stop type project on, on Highway 52, and there's no businesses there. I'm in favor of trying to provide more business services to what we have and of what's coming in the future as well.
Are there any other questions for staff? Thank you, Mr. Smith. So we will have a public hearing on this particular case. Since staff has recommended denial, we have speaking in support, Luke Dickey with Stimble Associates. You know the routine, sir.
Thank you, Chairman Lee, members of the board. Luke Dickey with Stimble Associates, 601 North Trade Street, Suite 200, Winston-Salem, North Carolina, 27101. And I just wanted to ask, has anybody else signed up in opposition to the case?
No.
Okay, very good. Thank you. So just going to run through a quick kind of presentation. Everything's kind of really hashed out on kind of the comments earlier on this. Again, we're talking about 7.2 acres. Requested use zoning from AG and GIS to HBS for a 5,800 square foot convenience store with truck fuel pumps to support the existing Union Cross Business Park and expanding warehouse and limited industrial uses on Wahlberg Road. We worked with NC DOT on site access and improvements to Wahlberg Road. So you see the median that's going to be required. Go 100 foot past our entrance on Wahlberg and all the way up to the Signal intersection there. And also then our full access will be on Hayes to that signalized intersection. We worked with planning staff. We understand, again, we know that the recommendation was going to be for denial going through this, but we did work with them to help mitigate some issues that we saw. So we worked with them on the, to limit the commercial uses to this site. And we also used, was, what we could match to the adjacent business park for limited industrials like offices and warehousing. So we requested those uses as well. Here's the list of all the permitted uses that are allowed within the HB zoning district. We've got the ones that are highlighted there on the left. Those are the ones that we requested. The ones that are highlighted in yellow are the ones that could be allowed in the limited industrial uses. What we do kind of clash with again will be the convenience store, food and drug store. We did that based because of the size of the convenience stores, over 5,000 square feet. And then potentially maybe for a car wash, which would have to come back to this board if we ever added a car wash to this one, which is not shown on the site plan right now. And also restaurant with drive-through, if there is a drive-through restaurant, like a Sheets type scenario that would be here. We want to have those uses included here, but we really tried to pare the uses down closer to what would be involved in a business park type of facility. Again, the area plan was talked about in the Forsyth County area plan. It does recommend this as a future business park with the availability of sewer. I also want to highlight on the I-74 corridor here, the other 1, 2, 3, 4 sites that are also slated as business parks with the addition of sewer. So that's kind of a key point here as we look at this site. So we're going to start talking a little bit more about the I-74 corridor. From a support context here for the facility and business parks, the closest convenience store with truck pumps for servicing of this site is actually the Sheets up located in Kernville, which is over six miles from the site. And that is really a function on the I-40 corridor. So there's nothing that has been developed here along the I-74 corridor. We've got the Ridgewood and Cole Road Industrial Parks and Facilities. We got the Union Cross Industrial Center there to the north. We got Caterpillar that's also up there. We have Union Cross Business Park directly to the west of the site. And then, of course, we have what's going on with the, this other site, which is basically 100, I think it's 190 acres roughly for the AH zoned area. So the star highlight is where we're proposing this convenience store location. So it's kind of central to what's going to happen along this I-74 corridor. And we think this is a good place for it to be located there. We did have a neighborhood outreach in regards to this, so we sent out letters to 47 property owners within 500 feet. And then that's highlighted in the light blue. We also reached out to everybody that owns property there to the east along Hayes Drive, which is a dead end road at this point. So there's really no traffic coming from, from that direction. We did not receive any calls or emails in regards to that. One thing I wanted to talk about also with this site is the fact that, you know, Robin Team here, he's also can come up and answer any questions you may have. But currently, they have already spent roughly 2.2, 2.5 million dollars in road improvements on Wahlberg Road as addition to the sidewalk, the widening, the turn lanes for the other things that they had to do when ARDA came in. With the 300,000 square foot industrial site and with this project, if it's approved, additional road improvements also have to be done. Sort of the medians, more turn lanes and signalization looked at from that standpoint. And with that estimate, it's going to be about maybe 1.5, another $2 million that they have to spend. This is, is something that they're looking at to be able to use to help pay for the, those road improvements as well from that standpoint. So that's kind of a return on their investment that they're making in this, this area. We can have an argument on whether or not it brings enough jobs or brings enough money from a CETA standpoint to spend on that. And so that's, you know, we can put that aside, but we are talking about a seven acre site, maybe a 50,000 square foot additional amount of square footage from a business park that we could put on that. And whether that weighs out and provides more jobs and more money is arguable to the investments being done for, for this convenience store. But we think this is a good use. We think it's something that will add to the overall context of the I-74 corridor. And as talked about, it's taking a little bit from, from the checking account, but not as much, it's still got the savings. So I'm glad that that was kind of clarified because I didn't know there was additional savings account in terms of the CETA for this area from, from that standpoint. Again, the question resulting, it's provided support use, not currently available to this industrial warehouse distribution users in this area. As was mentioned by Mr. Steelman, we are providing sidewalks. They're connecting all of this together kind of as well. The proposed zoning restricts uses to a limited amount of commercial uses and provides for uses such as office and warehousing, which is compatible. And I forgot to finish my sentence. This was my fifth presentation I had to do for, for today. So, but it's compatible again to the LI limited kind of business district that we already looked at to the south. And the site has the convenient access to I-74 in proximity to the beltway that's coming in. So I just kind of want to back up to the image there. Where my label, the UCIC, you see that brown strip that's going through? That is the beltway. So the beltway is going to be tying in just to the west of the site. So again, once more, that's going to add more areas from, in terms of access. And so that includes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
How much more land would you have had to buy to eliminate your CETA request?
I had not calculated. We were roughly just over 40% impervious for this. Again, the limit is 24.
Yeah.
And so, and then, you know, staff had mentioned, you know, the commercial property on the other side at the four acres, but unfortunately that wouldn't be large enough for what we're trying to do with this site. You know, that could probably do a convenience store, but we couldn't do the fuel pumps for the trucks in that scenario.
Any other questions for Mr. Dickey?
Not yet.
All right. Thank you. How much time is left?
Five and a half minutes.
Five and a half minutes left.
Have we ever?
Would anyone else like to speak in support? Mr. Team? You state your name, address, and zip code for the record.
I'm sorry, I gotta get out of your way here in a second.
No, that's great. If you pull that site plan back up.
Will do.
And Luke's.
Actually, the one that shows the industrial, the rezoning.
Oh, the industrial one?
Yeah, that shows, that shows both parcels together.
Just pull up Luke's presentation. Go to Luke's presentation.
Okay, that works. There we go.
My name is Robin Team, 450 North Patterson in downtown Winston-Salem, 27101. Our company has been developing in this area for quite some time. We built the ARDA facility immediately to the south. We built 250,000 square feet across Wahlberg Road for net seed. We've done about a million square feet there. We built about a million square feet on the other side of I-74 in UCIC. We finished up the last two facilities there in the last three or four months. So we built 2 million square feet in this neighborhood in the last little bit. Every one of those were industrial facilities, distribution and/or manufacturing. And we plan on doing significantly more in this neighborhood in the future. One of the things that is needed is the ability for all of these facilities, including 2.4 million and the previously developed Union Cross Industrial Park, away for their trucks to be serviced. We felt like this was a perfect location for, for such a facility. And quite frankly, paid up for this 30 acres of land, the 23 that went through rezoning earlier and then this seven acres that were, it's a subject of the conversation right now. One of the challenges of a developer is to acquire land at a price point that you can then have a competitive lease rate to take speculative development and attract a tenant and put it into service and, and, and generate tax value for the community and jobs for, for its, its residents. We have spent, as Luke said, over $2 million improving Wahlberg Road already. Now, that's Wahlberg Road way to the south of what's on this plan. And it includes the southern entrance into the previously developed Union Cross Park. The location that you see to the south of that plan, we are going to have to improve. And that's going to be probably another, just the intersections, 1.5 million dollars. And then we're being asked to widen Wahlberg Road all the way up to Hayes Drive. We're committed to doing that. We, that was part of our petition that, that went through the consent agenda earlier tonight. But that's going to be $4 million that we're spending on a road that's going to solve pass sins, if you will. When, when Union Cross Industrial Park was built, that was 2.4 million square feet. And Wahlberg Road was left just as a country road. So we came along after the fact and just happened to be the next kids on the block. And, and that requirement was put on us. It makes it hard to build an industrial development that makes economic sense when you have to spend $100,000 an acre on land and then another 50 or $60,000 per acre. And it wasn't that much in the first part, but it will be significantly more than that on this part. You take $2 million and divide it by 30 acres of land, you see how many more dollars we're spending to improve public roads. So the ability to monetize this seven acres in what we think is an ideal location enables us to take that money and turn around and spend it on the roads that will then make it easier for our company and other companies to develop further industrial in the area. Any other questions? Any questions, period? This is the first time we have ever brought a request before you that hasn't been recommended approval by staff. We're plowing.
This is history.
We're plowing unusual ground here. And, and we understand the.
Nice about it.
We understand the reasons why, just for the first time, we have a different opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Team.
Have all of your, has all of your development come with a CETA request, all your 2 million square feet?
No, UCIC is outside of, of that watershed, but.
It's only, the only thing is on the, is on the east side of Wahlberg Road. The west side is also out of the, so what they built across Wahlberg Road is outside the watershed. The watershed, the Wahlberg Road is the bridge line here.
The previous development was 109 acres. About 60 of that went to the ARDA development. We've got 30 left to develop with the extension of Business Park Drive across Wahlberg Road. So all of that is being used for industrial development.
Thank you.
How much time is left?
Minute and a half.
I have a minute and a half left. Would anyone else like to speak in support? All right, no one has signed up? Is anyone here in opposition? Seeing no one, I declare the public hearing closed. What is the pleasure of the board in this case?
Can we have a question or two?
Sure.
Have we get, have we ever granted, have we done a CETA allocation for a convenience store ever?
And I know that's something only.
Hold on one second, I'll tell you.
Hold on one second, I'll tell you. I don't think for a convenience store per se, I don't know what a couple of these things are. I know that Walker Town Comm, and again, this, that wasn't this board, it was the commissioners and perhaps the town of Walker Town, I can't remember. Walker, Walker Town Commons got a CETA for some commercial. For the most part, it's basically been economic development type projects. So I don't, I don't think the commissioners have, but I can't speak for smaller towns.
Yep, okay.
Well, I'm kind of thinking of this, if someone brought it in together and said, not separate, I know it was brought separately, we want to provide this for our industrial park. We want to include it in what we're doing. We're going to give fueling for convenience and give our employees a place to go. Would we consider that?
Yeah, we would, yeah.
As part of what they want to do.
Keep in mind, and again, the, I want to say to that, keep in mind, you can do, I mean, you would be allowed to do accessory fuel, an accessory fuel center in in an industrial park if that's what it was and not a convenience store. Again, obviously, convenience and fuel are two different things. Fuel could be done in a business park and has been done before, not necessarily in our jurisdiction, but in others. There are, there is a way to do fuel and not be a convenience store and provide that. But again, obviously, you've got a couple of different things. You know, I would just say, and again, if the board is so compelled to recommend approval that you, our biggest concern, again, is we don't want to see this area become commercial. There is commercial in the vicinity. It may, you know, again, it, it's not walkable, but few things in this area are walkable. You've got, as you go up Union Cross, Wahlberg, you know, transitions to Union Cross and you go up to forty, there is, there are hundreds of acres of convenience commercial there between Winston-Salem, Forsyth County, and Kernersville in that area. So there is a lot, there are a lot of things there. It may not be fuel for trucks, but there are opportunities for the folks that work in the industrial park to have an area to go to get something to eat, convenience goods and those kind of things. Our concern is, again, we don't want this to be precedent setting. So if the, if the planning board is so compelled to recommend approval of this, you know, again, that's our concern is precedent.
And right now, it's in a large lot zone property right now?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
I just think it's accretive, right? It's accretive to the whole idea of what Union Cross as a large project of economic development. So, I mean, if you want to motion, I'm happy to do it.
Please.
I move that the planning board find that the request is consistent with a comprehensive plan, right?
That's my, that was my question. I'm not sure that it is.
Thank you.
I don't think it is.
I think it would be inconsistent.
Yeah.
You could do inconsistent and still recommend approval if that's so the desire.
I thought the bottom, okay, sorry, that it's inconsistent with the comprehensive plan, sorry.
Can you repeat your motion?
Yep. I move that the planning board find that the request is inconsistent with a comprehensive plan.
Second.
Most by Mr. McRae, second by Mr. Lamb, any discussion? All those in favor, sign of I?
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign. That is unanimous.
I move that the planning board recommend approval of F sixteen forty-six.
Second.
Motion by Ms. McRae, second by Mr. Steelman, I think beat you to the point.
I'm sorry.
That's all right. All those in favor, sign of I?
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign. One, passes.
Mr. Chairman of Board, with that, we will move on to our last public hearing item, which will be, we'll hear from, we'll hear from Amy Crum, and we'll hear on the forward twenty forty-five comprehensive plan. And it looks like there are a few people that have stuck it out with us for for the comp plan.
I hope there's a food truck outside, Wendy.
All right. Good evening. So forward twenty forty-five, I'm going to start at the basics for folks. What is a comprehensive plan? It is the official public document that guides growth and development. It is a guide. So I just want to stress that it is not regulation, it is a guide, and it is community driven, and it is the vision for the future. It serves as a foundation for other plans, such as our area plans or topic based plans. It also serves sort of as a foundational document for city and county strategic planning, tax expenditures, bond referendums, and any sort of policies that may come from the elected bodies. We are mandated by the state to have a reasonably maintained comprehensive plan because we do our own zoning. So that's where we're at for the need. Just to go through the process, we started this process back in twenty twenty-one, looking at sort of gathering information on national, local trends, socio and economic trends, development trends, demographic data, and as well as looking at sort of comprehensive plans across the nation that had been recently adopted to see what other folks and other municipalities were including in their, in their comprehensive plans and what topics they were discussing. From there, we sort of started going out and marketing the plan that we were doing this process. We started with the twenty twenty-two fair, was really the first sort of Peru into, into marketing. We really just wanted to get folks out, let them know that we were doing this process and start gathering email addresses and contact information so that we can inform people as we move through the process. Starting in spring of twenty-three, we really started doing the outreach process, and that started with our website going online, as well as our online survey. That followed into doing presentations to boards and commissions, as well as holding stakeholder, stakeholder meetings, and then holding public input meetings. From there, starting in the spring of this year, we started drafting the plan based off the input that we had received, and then we're working towards adoption here today and and then going to the city council and county commissioners hopefully in November. So speaking a little bit more about our outreach efforts, again, we had the survey, we had over twenty-nine hundred participants, that started with a survey with over four thousand comments, written comments. We've attended sixteen community events, we had nine stakeholder meetings, we did a total of twenty public input meetings from the fall to the spring and to the summer, most recently. We did presentations to three teen groups through the recreation centers last summer. We had a children's booklet, activity booklet done. As I mentioned, we had the website, we've reached over ten thousand site sessions on that website. And all the information from the survey and the public comments and all that we see is on the website as well. And then we, we had a video that was produced, and we did a pretty broad-based marketing campaign with TV, radio, social media, and billboard that was sort of handled through our marketing department. This is a map showing where all of these different events had been held. The orange is community events, the blue is in public input meetings, and the green is a teen outreach event, trying to showcase that we've tried to go across the county and reaches many different groups of people where they were instead of trying to make them come to us. We spoke about this briefly, and we have throughout the process, and this idea that we are number four in population, but we're number sixteen in land size, and we're about seventy-five percent built out based off our current zoning and what is available for land under the current zoning. Through the survey, we noted three different sort of interests for this remaining twenty-five percent that are sort of competing against each other, and that is housing, economic development, and land preservation. And so when we went out to the public through the fall meetings, we asked folks to rank those in normal, in terms of importance to them, to just get some insight as to how we approach goals and strategies. And it wasn't a slam dunk any which way, but it turned out the land preservation was number one, housing was number two, and economic development was number three. And we utilized this as we started drafting our goals and strategies to make sure that we are putting those goals and strategies in place that would allow for all three to sort of coexist. So how do we make sure we do creatively do housing to meet our housing needs, to do economic development in a way that meets our economic development needs, but also allows for the opportunity, potential opportunity for land preservation? Through the input that we received from the public, we drafted five vision themes. And this is how the document is sort of structured, is around these five vision themes. And they are attainable housing and stable neighborhoods, strong economic opportunities, connected and accessible spaces, a vibrant character and identity, and a sustainable and healthy environment. And that's, it's very different contrast from Legacy twenty thirty, in that Legacy twenty thirty was based off chapters, and she had chapters on different topic areas. This, again, is the structure of the entire document, is around these five vision themes. And through that collective implementation of those five vision themes, we'll have managed growth and land use. And when you look at some of the goals and strategies within the plan, in this section, they really tie right back into those goals and strategies of the five vision themes. So there's that interconnectivity between them. Running through the entire document, S three guiding principles are the ideas of equity, livability, and resiliency. So every goal or strategy meets at least one of these principles. And the reason for this is when you think about equity, livability, and resiliency, how are those implemented? They're implemented through housing, job creation, quality of life, items such as amenities, such as land preservation, sustainability. So the other five vision themes really connect right into these guiding principles. So I'm going to go real briefly through these goals. For attainable housing and stable neighborhoods, the first goal really just speaks about creating an abundance of housing for housing choice across spectrum. Goal two speaks to creating low and moderate income housing, affordable housing for low and moderate income individuals. Goal three talks about addressing and rectifying historical injustices that have happened through past policies. Goal four is related to well-designed neighborhoods, creating well-designed neighborhoods that allow for access to amenities and services. And goal five speaks to homelessness and housing insecurity and what we can do within our realm and within the planning world to address those.
Amy, if you go back one slide, if you could just, no, 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 right there. Goal number two, affordable housing for low and moderate income individuals, can you expound on that and put some color on that as far as the numbers, so people that are listening understand what that means?
So when we talk, we use a lot of different terms, sort of, when we talk about housing affordability or attainable housing, we're talking broadly about households not spending more than twenty-eight to thirty percent of their income towards housing, whether it be rent or mortgage. And that's going to be different for every household. When we talk about low income or affordable housing, we're talking about low income or moderate income households specifically, and that's really your subsidized housing. And those are for individuals making less than eighty percent area median income, which is defined by HUD on an annual basis, and it determines, it's based on how many numbers of persons are in your household. I can roughly tell you for a household of four in Forsyth County, eighty percent is around sixty-five thousand. So anything less than that would actually qualify for subsidized housing, basically going up to a hundred and twenty, which is really where you get into that term of workforce housing. That's at about ninety-five-ish for a family of four. So those are usually the parameters that we're following, our community, either Housing Authority or Community Development Department are looking into for those, those ranges. So speaking about strong economic opportunities, the first one is recruit and retain companies that provide good quality jobs. It's pretty straightforward. And I will just mention that all of these goals are in no particular order. So goal one is just as important as goal seven. Goal two is around, timely, about increasing the supply of business and industrial park sites. Goal three is around looking at underserved areas in east and northeast Winston-Salem, Forsyth County. That is an area that has historically been devoid of economic opportunities. Now we have the Beltway, which lends us a chance to sort of rectify that in some way and really look at that and providing those opportunities for those residents. Goal four speaks about economic mobility, which is the ability to move up the economic ladder through workforce training, workforce development, educational programs. Goal five is about revitalizing downtown Winston-Salem as sort of an economic hub for the county. Six relates to really sort of pioneering and promoting our local entrepreneurs and creating that local workforce. And goal seven is about sustainable and vibrant agriculture economy and really looking at supporting agriculture, not just preserving the farmland, but really making sure that farmers have the network that they need, either through agriculturism or processing facilities, cold storage, things of that nature. Looking at connected and accessible spaces, this is really about transportation and access. Goal one is about sidewalks, relays, and bike lanes. Goal two relates to transit, the transit system. Goal three is about creating safety in our community so that people feel safe utilizing the infrastructure, getting from point A to point B. Goal four is about access for all individuals, no matter the age or ability or their socioeconomic status. Goal five is about sort of creating, again, very timely, based of our discussions tonight, about creating that connection between land use and transportation. And goal six is about connectivity. How do we connect our road network? How do we connect our infrastructure to best serve the community? Looking at vibrant character and identity, goal one is relates to public facilities and how to make them beautiful facilities and well-maintained facilities. Goal two is about maintaining clean and attractive neighborhoods. Goal three is about expanding our tree canopy. We heard a lot about trees and preserving our trees in the surveys, we wanted to include this information. So tree canopy and improving our green spaces, goal four and goal five are both about historic preservation, but two different aspects of historic preservation. One is about the regulatory side and the retaining of buildings and historic structures. Goal five relates to actually celebrating and sharing our actual history with folks so people can understand the history and know the history. Goal six is related to preserving our rural areas, and goal seven is related to public art. For sustainable and healthy environment, goal one is supporting climate change mitigation to minimize the local effects on Forsyth County. Our impacts will be very different than, say, coastal communities' impacts, so really trying to mitigate those. Goal two is about access to clean air, water, and green spaces for all residents. Goal three is about mitigating the sources of pollution and land use, I would think, you know, erosion control, stormwater, those sorts of issues, noise. Goal four is about connecting our parks or greenways and other open spaces to have a wildlife network and a network of green spaces for residents. Goal five relates back to protecting just our local ecology and natural landscapes. And then goal six again is about developing and supporting our local food economy, really addressing food deserts and making sure residents have access to healthy food. For managed growth and land use, goal four, again, relate, goal one relates back to residential rural areas and agricultural uses. Goal two is about infrastructure and prioritizing development where infrastructure already exists. Instead of expanding out, use what we have already. Goal three is about strategically expanding our developable area in a way that accommodates the growth, but is also fiscally, fiscally responsible. And goal four is about compatible land, transitions between land use, which has come up repeatedly in our discussions over time. So this is our draft growth management plan. I'll go over the different areas. I don't know how to, oops. Okay?
Yeah.
Okay, there we go. So this area here to the west of Lewisville, the area around Idles Dam, these two different basins here, and the area over here in Wahlberg, those are, went from GMA four to GMA three as there's already sewer projects in the pipeline for those areas. That is just the nature of how that works. Once sewer becomes available in an area, it automatically goes to GMA three. This larger area here in the southwest portion of the county, we are just reverting back to the original Legacy's recommendation. It had been GMA three as part of that original legacy. It went to GMA four in Legacy twenty thirty, and we're just reverting back to the original Legacy's recommendation. The other main change is up here. The other main change is up here, and this is Sturmington Road up through here. This is the Beltway. For folks, you can see my arrow. And we are looking at how do we sort of accommodate the Beltway. The Beltway's gonna change the market. It already has. We've already seen projects come in. So how do you address that? It is also the ridge line is up through here. So anything north of that will require a pump station. It won't be able to be gravity-fed. So we actually worked with the utility staff and looked at four possible new basins to expand into. We had the one here that's a little less than 4,000 acres. And then we had three others that are, would be in this area. In our discussions, we saw that in order to serve these up here, we'll need to expand into this area, which is already GMA four. And so we felt that that would accommodate enough growth over the next 20 years on its own. We didn't need to expand out into this area of GMA five. But we did want to include this area here to allow for that additional developable area as we move forward in time over the next 20 years. We are, however, recommending that the priority should be infill into areas into GMA two, GMA one, and GMA three that's currently served. There are still portions of GMA three that don't have sewers, so expand in those areas with a sewer before you ever go into GMA four. And then only once GMA four has been fully developed, do you go, even potentially think about GMA five. Talking about implementation, I won't spend a lot of time on this, but it is not an exhaustive list of implementation items, and that is by choice. We felt that this gives us enough to work with, but it also allows for flexibility. And we know that things change. Priorities change, funding changes, staff changes, new opportunities arrive, technology changes, we have another pandemic, who knows, anything can change. And so we wanted to allow for flexibility, to be nimble, and to be able to take advantage of those opportunities as they arrive, and not be sort of hammered in with a timeline for completion so that we can work within that and take advantage of that. They are organized by theme and goal, so this should be relatively easy to follow. Again, that's all I have. I'll be happy to answer any questions anyone has about the plan.
Amy, I want to thank you because you're getting your life back, for one thing. So we really appreciate it. You've done a great job, you and staff. So I think we will give you a round of applause for this.
I would, I would be remiss not to acknowledge Tiffany White and Kelly Bennett, who've been sort of my co-managers in this. And, you know, we, we made a point not to stress out at the same time. So we all sort of took our time. Each one would have a little stress out, and then the other two would pick up. So we were very good. And they, I could not have done this without them, as well as the rest of the staff. This was completely staff-led, all of it, from the graphics to the layout, to the input and the draft, and language and text, is completely staff-led. And it's really been a big hurdle, and they all deserve recognition for that.
Thank you. Any questions for Amy? All right, I think we will have, we have one person here to speak.
As you're saying, I mean, this is a public hearing. There are folks here. I know there's at least one person, not more than that.
So since we do have a public hearing, I am going to remind those who will be speaking that there are 12 minutes for each side. So first to speak in support is Matthew Mayers. If you could state your name, address, and zip code for the record, please. And let us know what you'd like us to know.
Am I the only one speaking in support?
Yes, sir.
Oh, so I get 12 minutes?
You get 12 minutes. Unless you want to speak on both sides, then you get 12.
I don't know, I don't know if my bladder will...
[laughing]
Y'all have long meetings. My name is Matthew Mayers. I live at 2844 Wesleyan Lane, 27106 in Winston-Salem. And first, I just want to say thank you to the Planning Department. This is a great plan. I really think you've done a terrific job. The process was great. The outcome was great. You know, it would be even greater if more citizens would show up to some of those input meetings and everything, but, you know, it was really well done. I have never spoken to this group before, but I speak frequently to the Winston-Salem City Council, and sometimes to the Board of the County Commissioners as well, usually on topics of sustainability, environmental sustainability. And so one of the things that I especially appreciate about this plan is that it is shot through with that theme of sustainability in ways that are not always obvious to people who don't think about this stuff. This idea of densifying our development, of using up places where we have infrastructure already, et cetera, so that we're not gobbling up farmland and rural spaces, is really, really important. A lot of times, I think, we have offices of sustainability in cities and towns and counties sometimes where all the focus gets put onto, you know, are we going to get some electric cars or not? And those are all great things, you know, the electric cars and the solar panels and all that, those are important. But we sometimes lose track of the fact that the very most impactful things that you all do in terms of the sustainability of our society are sometimes the zoning, or the rules that you put in place, or the leveraging of your own resources that you do that promote other kinds of behavior among the citizenry. So with that said, there are a few things that I kind of wish I had seen in the report that I didn't. And I'll just mention them because, you know, it's food for thought for everyone. I guess the biggest one is following on the heels of what I just said, leveraging some of the kinds of things that cities and counties do to promote better behavior, let's say. So some examples. When we invite companies in to do development and offer them big tax breaks, are we looking at just how many jobs they're going to create? Or are we looking at what are their sustainability practices and other kinds of practices as well, so that we really have the beginnings of new leaders in the community? When, say, the city of Winston-Salem decides that it's going to spend millions and millions of dollars on affordable housing issues, which is terrific, it's still not enough, but it's terrific that they're attempting it. Or further down the road, when they hopefully get their Affordable Housing Trust Fund in place. They can't change building codes, but they can sure tell people what they would like buildings to be like in order to get money from the city or the county, et cetera. And, you know, Raleigh may come back and swat her hand if we do something like that. But I say we make them do it, not just be afraid of having them do that. So those are the kinds of things that I think, big picture, we can have local governments leverage their authority and their ability to allocate funds so that we get better society-wide behaviors. And then there's a couple of things that have to do with, I guess, recent political developments at higher levels of government. You know, the federal government, a couple of years ago, put out the Inflation Reduction Act and the bipartisan infrastructure law and et cetera, right? Lots and lots of money flowing. And even though those, they might be one-offs, but they're very long-lasting sources of money. And again, a lot of times we see municipalities thinking, well, how do we access that money? But in reality, a big part of what you can do is help the rest of the community figure out how they can access that money. There's, there's an immense amount of, I don't want to say it that way. There's a serious lack of knowledge out there in the, in our communities about what's available, even just the simple things like, you know, homeowner tax credits to, you know, get a better HVAC system, or credits for electric vehicles, et cetera. But lots for businesses as well, and employers. I personally feel that the local governments could be putting resources, whether in terms of staff or a little bit of money, into making sure that we all know about it and that people are taking full advantage, especially coming up next year, there's going to be pretty significant money rolling down for lower-income folks in terms of housing improvement rebates, et cetera. And then finally, the state of North Carolina recently passed enabling legislation for CPACE funding, which sometimes, the acronym sometimes stands for different things, but the one I like to call it is the C, Commercial Property Assessed Clean Energy, which is basically just a way for lenders to finance clean energy projects for commercial entities using local property tax assessment or property tax collection as the method of payment. Doesn't cost anything to the local entity, the local authority, but it significantly reduces the risk to the lender so that they end up with better terms for the people who are going to be taking out loans to say. Say your business, you know, wants to tighten up the envelope in the building, put solar panels on, get a better HVAC system, et cetera. If you can get a great loan and it's 100% financing, all the better for, for all of us, really. It brings in business, and it brings down our carbon emissions as well. But in order for CPACE to happen, both counties and cities, the cities and the counties in which they reside have to pass concurrent resolutions to allow it to happen. And this is a big deal. I mean, nobody's going to talk, it's not going to make it into the paper because, you know, it's just not that kind of a thing. But I would love to see a planning board recommending to, well, maybe not, I don't know, the plan could certainly recommend that kind of action. So I don't really have a structure to my comments. I guess that's it. And I don't want to break your mic either. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any thoughts or questions for Mr. Mayers? Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
How much time is left?
Five minutes.
Five minutes. We have five minutes left. If anyone else would like to speak in support? Yes, ma'am? If you would state your name, address, and zip code for the record as well.
My name is Julie Magnus, 630 Fenmore Street, 27103. And I just want to thank the staff for the tremendous amount of work that went into it. I know that there was an attempt to get a lot of community participation. From a personal standpoint, I felt like all my opportunities for personal input were very in a silo, didn't have an opportunity to maybe share with other members in the community. It was put a dot on it, put a sticky note on it. Okay, I think a good end product came out of all the sticky notes and dots and whatnot, but clearly the community did not feel real involved because there aren't too many people here. I was in a meeting last night, and there were six people that had participated in some of these meetings, and I was the only one that got the email separate about this coming to the planning board. The only way they knew it was coming to the planning board was because it was on the planning board agenda. So I don't know how that happened. Like I said, I think a good product went out. I know there was a tremendous amount of staff input. It was easy to interact with the staff at meetings, but there was no community collaboration. And that's just my comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Three and a half minutes.
Would anyone else like to speak in support? All right, do we have anyone here in opposition? Seeing no one, I declare the public hearing closed.
Mr. Chairman, just a couple of things. There is a, I do want to reiterate your thanks to, I mean, obviously, this was a team effort by staff, but Amy and Kelly and Tiffany did an outstanding and excellent job on this. So again, I would myself be remiss if I didn't publicly state that. I'm not sure what the board's wishes are, and I don't know what the, I don't know what the motion in front of you says, but there is a resolution for approval of this. This is one of those things where the planning board actually does adopt the plan. It ultimately goes to the elected bodies, both the city council and the county commissioners, but there is a resolution in your packet for adoption. And then, you know, if you are so inclined, we'll eventually get you to sign that resolution. It won't happen today, but...
I'd just like to say, I think it speaks volumes that these three professional planners that have worked so hard so long were patient enough to be the last thing on today's agenda.
Yeah.
Mr. Murphy, I don't think we have the resolution in our docket.
Language.
We don't.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, well, I move that the planning board adopt 2045 comprehensive plan.
Motion by Mr. Perez, there's a second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Smith. Any questions? All those in favor of adopting for 2045, sign a "aye."
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. That passes. We're now going to have the staff report.
Mr. Chairman, I'll turn to Kirk real quick, who'll give you a preview of work session for October.
All right. Good evening again, everyone. In interest of brevity, we only have one item on the September work session. It will be a text amendment where we're going to be looking at ways to make it easier to do single-family development in multifamily zoning, similar to how we kind of right-sized some of the multifamily districts in terms of their height limits and number of units per building a few months ago. So we'll brief you all on that with an October public hearing scheduled.
Mr. Chairman, there are two more items on staff report. I'm going to cover one, and then I'm going to turn it over to Mark to do the rest. There is a historic marker, the HRC has a historic marker program, and the application for those are due by the end of October. That information can be found on our website. So again, I did want to mention that. I'll mention that moving forward. We do have a, the city and the county fund several markers per year, and there's a competitive application process for those. So again, that opens and closes, it closes the end of October, October 31st. With that, I'll turn it over to Mark, who'll go over the items that are on the screen.
Okay, well, best I can. So for next month in October, we actually have eight total items. We've got the one continued rezoning. That was continued from this last, this rezoning case today. We've got four new rezoning requests, two planning board reviews, and one text amendment. So what we have coming up is, as you see coming, nominations will be coming next week or two as a community appearance awards. This is where I probably don't know as much as I probably should. But if you want to, Amy, do you want to kind of cover that?
Sure. So the community appearance awards, we do those on a biannual basis, and they basically look at individuals, organizations, or projects, development projects that are complete, based off appearance. And they, there's 11 award categories that can be given out, and it's across the county. But we will have sort of an application process that folks can submit their nominations for that, and it's held in the spring. And it's, the awards are selected by, the award winners are selected by a jury panel of sort of development-related individuals who work outside, work outside the county and live outside the county.
And if you like apples, oh, go ahead, Kirk.
Oh, no, you go ahead and take it away, Mark. You're doing a good job.
If you like apples, there's a Historic Apple Festival in Methabert Park coming on September the 28th from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m.
And Mr. Chairman, that is it for staff report.
All right, is there anything else for the good of the order?
We'll have our motion to adjourn.
Have a great evening.